Matter of fact, DoorDash delivered twice in the last like five minutes right before I came to the meeting. And the young lady come out, got the food, went back in the house. So they're still living in the house. And I've got video at night where, you know, cars are coming in the middle of the night, still parking, dropping people off and leaving. So if you could, you know, find out if we can put a lockbox on the house or if you, Sheriff's Department wants to put a camera back in my yard to watch, that's fine by me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adam. We'll make sure the Sheriff's Department knows about that as well. Next up, we have Rosa Culver-Sims.
Hi, how are you? My name is Rosa Culver-Sims and I reside in 9445 Leighton Drive. And I'm here to speak to you tonight about the policy or decision not to allow voter registration at the Juneteenth event that we had. You know, historically, African-Americans have been denied the right to vote. There have been tricks, gerr-mandering, and everything else to keep us from voting. When we were emancipated on Juneteenth, that gave us the right to vote. So that celebration is all about us having that right. And for you to say, "We cannot register people to vote," says to me that you're afraid of something. I don't know what your fear is, but you're denying us the opportunity to register the people in Harrisburg to vote in any and every election. Now, while you may think that was a wise thing to do, it was not. And I request that you look at that policy, reverse that decision, and allow us that right. I know for a fact other affiliations have been allowed privileges that Democrats have not been. And that needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Culver-Sims. Next, we have Judy Tarbox.
Um, can I address my colleague, Missy?
Is that Jack?
Jack Ward.
Yes.
I'm shadowed.
And just state your name and address for the record, please.
Judy Tarbox, 12691 Plaza Road Extension, Charlotte. It's Cabarrus County, though. Uh, we're here as part of the American Legion, Robert F. McLeod.
Hang on one second. Yeah. I'm sorry, hang on one second. I just want to make sure everybody can hear.
I cannot. I can't hear.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, we are, Jack and I, Jack is our commander for the post, Robert, excuse me, Robert F. McLeod, Harrisburg, Post 523. And we are actually here just to introduce ourselves and let you know that we are part of the community. We've been participating in some of the events in the area. And of course, we're welcoming veterans to come and join us. We meet the third Monday at 6:30 at the Presbyterian Church. And this coming meeting time on the 21st, we are planning a blood drive. If you are interested, it's with OneBlood and you can go on their website to schedule if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. I love it. Next, we have Jamin Bryant-Heron.
Peace, thank you, ma'am. For Claire, I may need...
We've got three minutes, sir, I'm sorry. So you just need to state, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Jamin Bryant-Heron, Cabarrus native. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I'm here to express this...
I need, I'm sorry, we need the address, please.
Yes, on the phone, Cabarrus native, thank you. I'm here to express a grievance.
Oh, hello. Oh, thank you. I'm here to express a grievance regarding the town of Harrisburg's policy prohibiting political activity in the public park rentals and how that not only impacted this year's Juneteenth celebration, but any future community events. First and foremost, I want to thank the Harrisburg, Cabarrus County Black Student Unions for their planning and dedication in organizing the second annual Juneteenth events without their hard work and without the passionate support of Mayor Pro Tem, Latricia Glover, and Sanaa Owens, who started the event last year, a student here in Cabarrus County. This important community event would not have taken place. And but while this event was successful, again, I have some concerns. As Ms. Rosa spoke, despite Juneteenth being recognized as a national holiday, an opportunity to celebrate freedom, history, and unity, this town did not offer formal sponsorship, advertisement, or logistical support. There was no financial assistance, no offer of free security, though that's something the town requires, and no presence from elected town officials. And what's more troubling, again, is the restrictions that were actively placed on who could participate in this gathering, including the Black Political Caucus of Cabarrus County, which we sponsored this event. So we are a nonpartisan group focused on civic engagement and supporting youth leadership, and yet we were barred from participating because of this town's policy. And this policy, again, would prevent Democrat, Republican, Independent, or other party affiliations from public events, except for 4th of July Parade or the Republican event that was held at the Harris Depot Park that was widely advertised and held without issue. I assume those are the only exceptions. But the town's form prohibits any political activity, partisan events, electioneering, or campaigning, including simply handing out flyers or posting signs. And so even if your goal is to avoid partisanship, which I respect, this policy is broad, biased, and overreached, and likely unconstitutional. So I believe organizations should be allowed to register voters, provide information, and uplift civic participation as it's needed in our community. As you know, with only 10% of the turnout in our last 22 municipal elections, I'm sure there are some candidates here that would like that increased voter turnout this year. Ms. Rosa spoke to the historical impacts of these events, and parks have been a place where people can often afford to have campaign events. So I'll skip down just for a time. As a Cabarrus County graduate, we never had a chance to see Juneteenth celebrated when I was in school, and so it was powerful to witness our young leader's step up. Juneteenth in Harrisburg was birthed by Harrisburg residents, Sanaa Owens, but they deserve better from the town and our elected officials. They should be encouraged to be politically involved, not discouraged. For students to be told they can host a celebration but not talk about voting says we'll celebrate your past but not support your future. So, oh, sorry, we and you all in government are responsible for fostering safe places to exercise these rights. And so the question is, who changed the policy, when and why? Who and what is this policy really protecting? I respectfully call for the town of Harrisburg to immediately revise this policy to allow nonpartisan political activity, including voter registration and civic education, and support and uplift Juneteenth as you would any other national holiday, including advertising, sponsoring, and having an active presence. Thank you. Love and peace.
Thank you. That is it for public comment. Rob, did you?
Yeah, I've got, you know, a few of these I can address directly. So first was the grade separation, Mr. Houston expressed. We do have that letter. He dropped that letter off. We scanned that in. It'd be distributed electronically to each of you, basically expressing the same words that he had tonight. I would point out that I would, I'd be happy to meet with you and discuss the difference between what they did 13 years ago when they looked at this and what we're doing. It's quite, quite different, and it's combined with both Hickory Ridge Extension and Robinson Church. And isn't just looking at a grade separation from a bridge standpoint. We're also looking at whether or not that could be tunnelled, whether or not there are other locations that these crossings can be had, and what the traffic impacts of all of that are doing. And this is just a really upfront preliminary look, so that if grant funding becomes available...
Rob, can you check your microphone?
Can you hear me now? All right. So I'll start at the beginning. I'd be willing to meet with you and discuss some of the significant differences of what this project is doing versus what was done 13 years ago when they did the rail project. I think we're taking a much more in-depth look at the different possibilities as to where the rail just really wanted to eliminate as many possibilities, or as many crossings as possible, and didn't look at all the possibilities of can you go, can you tunnel under it versus going over it? How does that tie into a Hickory Ridge Road extension into veterans and different things like that? So the outcome would be we would have a preliminary engineering model that then when grant funds become available, we could then take that and get federal and state monies. Because projects like this, as you rightly mentioned, are millions of dollars, right? Tens of millions of dollars, not something that our residents are going to be able to afford. So this is something we need to be prepared for well in advance as they put out infrastructure dollars, particularly in the times of a recession or a depression. That's generally when they try to jumpstart the economy with big massive infrastructure spending. And we'd like to be ready when that happens. That's been a success of ours in other transportation projects like Route 49 and Caldwell Road. So be happy to sit with you and explain that a little bit more. And I think it would shed a little bit better light that it's not, you know, spending good money after bad. I think they already covered Lakeview, so I'll skip over that one. And then, you know, I had missed, Ms. Rose's last name here, as I'd written it down, but both of the other two comments were in reference to our no political activity on park rentals policy. This has been our policy since the Harrisburg Park expansion, since we put the amphitheater in. You know, there are good and bad on having a policy like that. It has historically served us very well in the fact that we do not allow any political activity in our parks. It keeps the town very nonpartisan. It stops us from having to pick winners and losers if two different political organizations are fighting over a certain date or a certain space, and really allows us to keep our parks open for events that really build the community and build camaraderie together. I certainly know that this one had some hiccups in it in that the communication wasn't great down the line. The rental form has it on there that you can't do this, but I know some of the vendors, particularly the Cabarrus Black Caucus and I think Down Home Carolina, were planning on being vendors at this event and were notified at the last minute. From a staff standpoint, we regretted that. I think that was something that should have been communicated very clearly and not just relied on people to read the fine print in the application form. But it was communicated out in black and white when this happened. Now, again, this is something that the town can change. We can allow political activity in our parks. We did not allow, I think it's Mr. Heron, did I get that right? Apologize if I mispronounced it, but we didn't allow any Republican events in Harris Depot. Those were unsponsored events that weren't, they didn't ask the town, they didn't get permits. This was an ad hoc thing, and that was something that we had checked with our parks after it had happened. Like, what the heck, you know, this, this isn't something that we allow. How does this happen? And they didn't ask. They just showed up. So they were notified after the fact that that happens again, and there would be some pretty significant consequences to that. But certainly, from a staff standpoint and from a direction from the board, I don't know of anybody that's trying to, you know, stifle voting registration. I think there are other areas, when we talk about safe places to go out. We allow neighborhood canvassing. Obviously, you can't stop it, but we promote neighborhood canvassing. All of our public spaces are available, with the exception of specifically our parks where we do the rentals. That's just something that's been carved out. That way, we can provide that space that's often fought over for timing standpoints to things that build community and aren't necessarily dividing us politically. That's, that's kind of the genesis of it, but I certainly did want to say that, you know, there was the notification. It is a consistent policy across all political spectrums. There isn't, this isn't a Democrat, Republican, or any other party preference thing, and that, you know, ultimately, it's a town policy. It's, it's, it's everybody or nobody. So it might be something that, that we feel very good about, like, you know, our, our young students getting politically active and getting out and registering, which feels good and we can all support. But that also means Proud Boys can come here and rent our amphitheater and hold an event, and there's nothing that we can say. So, you know, that's, that's one of those issues that we have to be very careful about because we can, we can limit everybody, or we can limit nobody, but we can't, we can't have a sliding scale of it. I know you have your hand up, but that would be up to the mayor of whether or not we, we take any back and forth. But from a policy standpoint, it is our policy of no political activity on park rentals or park reservations, but more than, more than supportive of Juneteenth. We love that event. Proud of the kids that are able to put that on every year. I think a lot of hard work goes into that, and we hope to see that, that event grow and get more activity each and every year. For the time being, no political activity though.
Ms. Sims, she can come back up real quick.
I guess my question, can you hear me?
Yes.
I guess my question is, are you aware that voter registration is about as nonpartisan as you can get? If someone walks to that table and they want to register Republican, we register them. We don't say, "No, we can't," because I'm a Democrat. So that's about as nonpartisan as you can get.
I think our, our barrier wouldn't be necessarily activity, but who's doing it? If it's a registered political action committee that's signing up to be a vendor at any of our events, we would deny them regardless.
Okay, I'm not that. I'm a resident of Harrisburg.
Yeah.
And the people that were going to sit at the table with me are also residents of Harrisburg.
Well, I'd love to talk about nuance. If, the only two that came to my attention were the Cabarrus County Black Caucus and the Down Home Carolina. Those, those two were brought to my attention. I said that those two would be an issue because they're registered political organizations. If there's non-registered political organizations that might be in a gray area, that's an important thing for our Parks Director, Jim Spina, and myself to be brought to our attention. I can make, you know, whatever judgment calls I can on that. And if I'm unsure, that's when I bring it to the board in a forum like this and say, you know, what are, what are our thoughts? Is this, does this cross the line or does it not? And, you know, our goal is never to, we want everybody, I might speak for the council, but I'll speak for myself and our staff. We hope that everybody in America that's eligible to vote registers and votes and exercises that right in every election that they have. I haven't missed an election since I was 18 years old, and I don't plan to miss one unless, you know, illness or something takes me away from that. So, you know, our highest calling as Americans is to go out and exercise the rights that we fought for.
Absolutely.
And, and so by no means would we try to discourage that. However, we have to be careful on what is political activity and what is not. And I think that's where it can get into that gray area of if a political action committee is out registering voters. It doesn't matter if a political action committee is out handing out popsicles. The who's doing it and who the vendor is matters to us on our forums when we do an event, just to make sure that we're treating everybody equally and that we don't have, you know, a group come in and say, "Well, you let them, but you didn't let us," and getting into that gray area.
So I would be loved to sit down and talk with you about the nuances. So that next year, when I grab my table to go register people to vote at the Juneteenth, I'm welcome with open arms.
Yeah, well, let's, let's figure it out and make sure that we understand, you know, what those clear boundaries are. And that also gives us time as a group as we get into our planning sessions. Every year, we look at policies. Every year, we look at effectiveness. I personally think our, our nonpartisan policy has served us well. But if ever that changes, then we'll be ready to execute it.
Ms. Sims, we have your phone number on here, so I'll make sure that Rob gets that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, moving into the consent agenda, is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening?
Motion.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. We will start with our communications section, and we will have our town manager, Rob Donham, present his information tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm going to be pretty quick in managers' updates since I have a presentation later on Senate Bill 205 that I'll be giving. And we've also added an economic development section to tonight's agenda. So both of those are generally information that I would cover. And without stealing anybody else's thunder, because I know we have lots of event updates, I wanted to solely use my time to thank the town council, the community, and most critically, our staff for all the effort that went into the 4th of July celebration. We had another wonderful year of two days of celebration, sandwiching the parade. And Jim Spina and his group did a marvelous job of what I call herding cats and organizing chaos throughout that time, as well as our communications director. Right now, is a one-woman band, and she kept up the entire time and knocked it out of the park. And certainly, our deputies and fire, and we just have dozens of volunteers in the town that get out there when they could be out with their families on vacation, as most Americans are, celebrating the 4th of July. They're here making sure that our town can celebrate that in a, in a positive way. And the town council does that as well. I know all of you would love to spend the majority of that time with your families, but instead, you serve it with us, making sure that we recognize our military veterans and our community and putting that event on. So I wanted to thank the council again for supporting that, funding that, and making sure that we can, we can do that every year. And then, again, recognizing our, our staff that volunteers for that because they just did an incredible job. I will, however, answer any questions that the council has on anything that I didn't update you on.
Are there any questions for Rob?
Can you provide an update? I saw a little bit of a notice in your email, but on the steering committee. And who's on that?
Yeah, we'll have, I don't have it in front of me exactly who's on it, but we'll have an official one out tomorrow, and I can copy you on everybody that's on that. The council has their own role as a steering committee in and of themselves. So they kind of, it's kind of what we were waiting for to build that out is to understand fully each month, what is the council doing, what check-ins do we have, so that we understood the council influence. There will be some council appointment to the steering committee as well, but most of the council work will be through the council's own quote-unquote "steering committee." But I'll send you a copy of that tomorrow.
Any other questions for Rob? Okay, next up, we have Brian with our finance monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All right, have your finance report for the conclusion of fiscal year 2025. So here's our revenue and expense dashboard over operations. You can see the general funds revenue... can see the general funds revenues reached 106%, so about $2 million over the budget there. Big contributors to that were sales tax, utility taxes. So both of those come from the state distributions and state activity and then interest income as well. So really great revenue year for the general fund. You can see tax collections there reached 102% as well, and that's mostly attributable to motor vehicles and personal property. The water and sewer fund reached 105%. We had a grant that impacted that as well as some interest income. And then the storm water fund at about 103% of its projected revenues. Looking down across all of our departments and their operational expenses, most of our departments are in the mid to upper 80% budget utilization, which is a really good number for us to see as we close out the year. We do have some expenses that will continue to get booked back to this fiscal year as we receive those throughout the next month. But for the most part, these are, these are pretty reliable numbers here for year end. Moving on to other departments, in the general fund, they're mostly in that same 80% range, 80 to 90% range. There are a couple of departments such as planning and zoning, economic development, engineering, and streets in particular, that have pretty low budget utilization for the year. And those departments all have large studies or big, big operational projects that will likely carry over from one year to another or not fully expended in one year. So that's why you see a lot of those differences for those departments. But for most of our departments such as Parks and Rec, Fire, you'll see those in the 88, 89% range as we expect to see. The water and sewer fund landed right at 90% for the year and storm water at 68%. Salaries across the town at 87%, which is about $1.3 million that will flow to the capital reserve funds at the conclusion of the year. Now we'll move over to our project dashboard. So here's our single year projects. And one to draw your attention to is the splash pad HVAC. This is a new system that was added to the splash pad room. The new units have been installed and are working nicely. There is an exhaust fan needed for the chemical room and that gets installed this month and that will close out that project. Continuing to look at our single year projects here. The window and door replacements for Fire Station One have been completed, as you can see pictured there. These are a lot more energy efficient and much, much better in the water ceiling than that building had before. So a good improvement there for that building. This is a look at the cookout site right before it was finished up, and we have this under the annual greenway program. You can see the new greenway that runs along the Zmax Boulevard stretch of the property there, and it continues all the way down into the park. And so this was just a piece of our annual greenway program that we were able to implement along with this development project here. Speaking of those types of annual programs, the ADA sidewalk program was also finished up in June with work in Litchfield Village. And so areas for improvement have, are being identified right now for the fiscal '26 version of that project. And then also here's a picture of the Harris Depot parking lot project that we did this year. This is a chip seal instead of an asphalt surface, so much more economical to put down. And it was striped during June and considered complete now. And here's a look at our multi-year projects in the design phase. Just a little bit of movement during June, the pedestrian facility for Oakley Drive, that survey was completed. And so now we officially move into the design and engineering for that project. And moving on over to our projects in construction, here are the sidewalks along Stallings Road. Those are essentially finished up as we speak today. As of June 30th, had about 90% completion. So just a couple punch list items to finish out. And this is a view of the sidewalk condition right in front of Flowers Farms. But again, this stretched from Middleton all the way to the Harmony neighborhood. And then two other projects under construction are on the agenda for your consideration tonight to get those projects started up. That is the Davis Creek Greenway and Cambridge Drive extension into Town Center. Back Creek Greenway and Trailhead moved up a little bit in the construction phase as well as its survey was completed. Here's a look at our equipment projects for the year. We have the same five that have been hanging out for most of the fiscal year. They have been ordered and we are just awaiting delivery on all of those. Those will be carried over to the next year to be finished out. And kind of the same story for our vehicle projects here. We see that we did get another deputy vehicle. We had a little bit of movement on the builds for the fire engine and the brush unit for the fire department. So those will also be carried over as we know those were long build times. And the last look at our professional services projects for the year. No real progress during the month of June on these, but we do have a lot of activity on the comp plan and the Town Center overlay plan kicking off this month, as you'll see. So I also wanted to give you a preview of the fiscal year 2026 dashboard. So we have rolled over any project that was not completed that I just showed you, and those are shown in yellow since they have been started. And then most of your new projects are shown in red since they have not been started up yet. So a couple of the single year projects here, another round of the ADA sidewalk program, the annual greenway. We have our pavement resurfacing project, big, big paving program through Powellville. And then Parks and Rec has several equipment type items there or small improvements. And then the one at the bottom of the screen is the largest this year with the artificial turf project in Harrisburg Park. Here's the projects in design. We have one addition here. It's the restroom facility at the Holcomb Woods Athletic Complex. So that'll get kicked off this year. And on the construction side, we have the Woodside Drive pedestrian facility, Main Street Park improvements, and Highway 49 lighting improvements, as well as another fiscal year of our annual sanitary sewer rehab and storm spot improvement projects. On the equipment side, the fire and deputies have a couple of new pieces of equipment as well as water and sewer with a generator and a replacement RTV. And on the vehicle side here, we have just several replacement projects here, but it's a pretty light year on vehicles for us in general. And then here are three carryover projects on professional services. As I just mentioned, the audit gets completed in October with that presentation in December to you all. And then our comp and Town Center plan will both be completed this fiscal year. And with that, I welcome any questions.
I, I do have one question. On the salaries were about 87%. Is that just slow to hire? I see a lot of jobs posted and...
There's a, there's a little bit of cushion in that, in that budget number, very small, but there is, as we don't know exactly what raises people will get throughout the year. And then yes, the vast majority of that is vacancy.
Is that what you've seen in years past? Are we ahead or behind or kind of?
That's pretty close. I'd say we're, we're usually in that 88 to 93% range. I would call that a really successful year.
Okay.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our economic development update. This is something new that we have added to the agenda, and we are looking at doing this quarterly unless there is something that comes before then and we need updates. So we're happy to have Ryan with us this evening.
Excellent. Mayor, members of council, thanks for the opportunity to be here today. All right. I'll just jump right in. You're probably familiar with a lot of the strategies from the Strategic Economic Development Plan, which the town adopted, I believe, about 18 months ago roughly. So what this is, snapshot of what's been initiated, what's been completed in the last months from my starting roughly in the end of March. So you can see what I tried to do is give a fair assessment of where we are currently. Yellow means we're in process. We're implementing roughly below, in between 30 and 60%. Green indicates 60% and above, and red obviously is below 30%. Just a heads up on the Strategy 1.3, you'll see where it's 0% there. With that strategy in place, you need to have a good relationship and rapport with your businesses before you can initiate something like a resiliency program for economic disruption. So I hope to obviously fill this up with more green as the quarters move on, but wanted to give you an indication that we have made a lot of progress in the first couple of months of the program. Project activity. So this is a new slide for the town, but I'll be updating it each quarter to give an understanding of where we sit in comparison with the other municipalities in Cabarrus County. So CEDC, that's our County Economic Development Group. They're located in Concord, but they represent all of the municipalities and the county as a whole. Project list, you see Concord, Leeds, as you would expect with the largest population, Kannapolis, and then Harrisburg. When I go to the next slide, you can see where we compare with the other municipalities. But in this slide, I added population. So some quick math, you can actually see we're pacing ahead of Concord and Kannapolis per capita. So that's a very encouraging number for us. When I started, we had roughly one project that was currently being managed by the town, and we've been able to increase that to 10 active projects. So we're pacing ahead and my goal is to get ahead of Kannapolis and at some point be Concord if that's possible. Project activity, this breaks down the mix of our projects. So you'll see we have a good portion of those are manufacturing and then others. So other can be a project that's maybe an office user, a fitness center, really you name it. So I'll try to break this out over time, but I'm trying to get an understanding of the mix of projects. I did include distribution because we do have some distribution facilities currently in the town, but we currently don't have any new prospective distribution companies looking at the town or expansions. The graph on the other side indicates sites versus buildings. And over time, you'll likely see this transition as well. Currently, a lot of our projects are looking at active sites, but traditionally in economic development, you'll see more companies looking at existing buildings. They need to move quickly and they need space where they can move in rapidly and hire folks and start operations. This is reflective as well. Our vacancy rate is very low in town, which is a blessing and a curse. Obviously, it shows a strong economy, but it doesn't allow a lot of business activities. As companies grow, they may not have space that meets their needs. So we're working with planning and management to encourage development of new business opportunities, flex space, office space that could house companies that want to expand here, but also move into the community. One key strategy for us was business retention and expansion. So getting out and meeting with our local companies. So I've met with 10 what we're calling larger employers. So these are employers with 20 employees or above. If you talk to the SBA, they'll deem a small business, I think it's 250 employees and up. But for a town our size, I think 20 is a good realistic figure. But also 14 meetings and visits with smaller employers. So we're not just meeting with the larger employers in town. I want to meet with every business that's in town and try to find out ways that they can work together. I've heard from numerous small businesses of opportunities to partner with our larger business. I heard a great story earlier this, last week. One of our larger employers has hired a local restaurant to provide a staff lunch, and we're really encouraging that to keep our money local, help our local businesses grow. So these are stats from April 14th to June 13th. This time of year is tough to get in businesses. So when we anticipate when school starts back up in August, it'll be a lot easier to get back in and meet with our businesses. So congrats to Rob Photography. I wanted to give him a shout out here. He's, he's in these visits, but he's not, and he's taking the picture. So you won't see his smiling face. But we did meet with the mayor in Saddle Creek, one of our larger employers in town, had a great walkthrough of their facility. We're actually, we have two representatives from Saddle Creek and then Stephanie, who's with the County Economic Development Agency that I mentioned. She handles existing businesses and she toured Saddle Creek with us as well. So it was good to create a relationship with them and work to grow that relationship. They're actually going to more likely be the host of our first Harrisburg Industry Council meeting. We really haven't determined what we're going to name that, but in essence, a meeting of some of our larger employers in town. And then also a cool shot with a NASCAR driver, Ricky Stenhouse Jr. They had a Fan Fest during the week of the 600 here in Cabarrus County. And this was the first time they have new ownership. We have new folks on the economic development side. So we really decided, let's work together. So Hyatt's been a great partner for us. They participated in the parade. I think they had, I'll just say thousands of Fun Pops that were distributed from one of their sponsors. You can see their, their sponsors in Alamance County just up the road. I think, Lee, you went to pick them up if I heard correctly. So thousands and thousands of Fun Pops. So that all came out of Hyatt and an enhanced relationship with that company. We're really proud to have them. They wanted to participate in the parade this year, but their cars were going to be in Chicago for the race. I anticipate them being a real strong corporate partner moving forward. So this is just the tip of the iceberg, but more relationships like this with our local businesses. Some things moving forward in the next, as we start our fiscal year here as the town. This should be in process, it's actually processing right now. We should have a building and site database on the town website. I would say within a week or two. It's pretty easy technically. But this will allow us to have, as I alluded to earlier, a real resource for our businesses, not just in town, but out of town, to see what space we have. So you can be anywhere in the world, on your mobile, on your laptop, iPad, you name it, and pull up our information. It's also valuable for business owners, you know, who may have a year left on their lease just to see what's out there in the market. One of the cool features of this product is if you come to me and tell me, all right, I've got two years left on my lease, we have 2,000 square feet now, we may need 4,000 square feet. I can put that into the system and it'll email me updates as new properties come online. So I'm constantly looking at this database, but if something pops up and I would miss it, it would automatically email me as, to make sure I'm prompted to reach out to the business owner. So we also have the in-house version of Moody's Pro, so we can pull up information on any building in town and provide that to planning, management, you name it. Another resource we're providing and trying to be more of an asset for the town and provide more information that may be needed. So any, anyone in Town Council, if you need a quick information about a piece of property, reach out. We can turn that around in probably 10 minutes or so with demographic and traffic count information. With that, it's a lot to cover in a few minutes, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I've got one for you real quick. Did we have any influence over, I think it's Harrisburg Plaza? They went through a repaint. Did we influence that in any way or?
I noticed it. It is, we have started, I guess, modifying our facade improvement program. So with that particular enhancement, not yet, but I was actually reworking that today. We're trying to get the word out. I think the program is very strong. We just haven't had the opportunity to reach out to our business owners and our building owners. So that would be a great example. And we've met with some of the folks on the planning staff and code informs, meeting with our local businesses and making them aware of that program. So I would not be surprised if we don't see more improvement like you see with that paint job, which did add a lot to that space.
It, it looked nice. I mean, DMV, that complex could use some assistance as well.
Absolutely.
It is. Thank you.
Ryan, I'm an idiot on this stuff, so bring me up to speed. So projects are, folks call in and they want to RFI and RFP or what space do you have? Or tell me if you have warehouse space. Is that what a project is?
Yeah. And it can, projects are very vague. So it can be something coming from the federal, state, or regional level with a codename, specs, you name it. Or it can be someone who calls and they have a really cool business idea. So it really does vary. So yeah, both examples you gave.
Okay. So, so we get that and probably Kannapolis and everybody else gets the same thing, the requests and then we stack up against it.
And I, you know, we all can respond to projects, but I think it's really reflective of your economic development program, if you're self-generating those where people feel comfortable to reach out to call. And please send folks my way. I'm glad to talk to anyone. I'll meet, I met with, you know, local citizens who have business ideas and we'll try to get them to the SBA or Community College or school. Those opportunities are out there for, for small business startups.
I saw the website, but how slick is our collateral? If somebody asked, do you have a standard boilerplate that says Harrisburg is the greatest thing in the world and that's ready to go? Or are you having to do these on the fly or how does that work?
We have, I've created a on-the-fly option right now, but luckily working with our communications team, it's in the pipeline. So we know we have the nuts and bolts. We just need to make it look shiny and impressive. Luckily, our, our stats are great to sell. We really have a strong base here in town. So we will work on some of those, you know, easy to email, easy to print PDFs that we can get out and we'll put them on the website as well to be a resource. But what we want to do is make sure it's reflective, a true indication of our market and not just be a fluff piece, so to speak.
Well, and, and the third thing is, I mean, I love what you, the best place to find new customers is old customers going out to Saddle Creek and, hey, Hyatt, move the rest of the shop down here, you know, we're a great place. So...
Yeah. If you don't take care of your existing businesses, you know, that's where roughly 70, 80% of your job growth is. So you have to make sure your local folks are doing well.
Exciting. Exciting. Early days.
Absolutely.
And I want to brag a little bit on Ryan as well, when you mentioned the projects and kind of where they come from. I think it was our second or third slide that Ryan showed, you know, fifty percent of those are self-generated. Those aren't coming from, yeah, so Cabarrus CDC there. That's where our state and federal, that's where they're sending out RFIs, RFPs. The other half of those are Ryan out, you know, meeting everybody around here, putting our name out, saying, hey, look, these are the resources that we have, and making those connections. And he's like, oh, okay, well, how can you help? Can you get me an in with this other company, or can you get me an in with this real estate agent, or do you know a property that's available, or can you help me get here to there? And he's been doing a great job in a very short amount of time, taking that number from the one project, which you're all familiar with, that I was working on prior to us having the EDC department, to ten. And I think that that's just in one quarter. So I'm really impressed with where we've gotten with our strategic economic development plan so far. You can see a lot of these are, you know, two-thirds done already. I told him, don't work himself out of a job. I'm glad we're getting all these numbers, but he's just going to have to create more work for himself at the end of these. So keep going, but we're making great progress on the plan. Ryan's did a great job on that, and we're getting great feedback from the community on government being an asset, that when something needs to be done now and they get a hold of the town, we're now facilitating business instead of being an impediment to that business, and that was the goal of the investment in general.
I personally love to see our story. A lot of our story is proximity. We're close to ten tents, close to Concord Mills, close to the airport, not too close to Charlotte, close to Charlotte. And that's where I think Casey could play a role in telling our story. Did you know?
Yes.
The undiscovered gem right here.
Any other questions for Ryan?
I just assume you're joined at the hip with Barbie Jones in the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce, and have met her, and see what a firecracker she is, and how much she can help.
Absolutely. Barbie, I think I'm, well, I've known her for twenty-plus years now, so she was one of the first people I spoke with, actually. So yeah, she's been a great resource for us. And we have the local chamber branch that meets here in Harrisburg. I think it's Thursdays at nine.
I think it's eight.
Eight, yeah. It's a conflict with all of our meetings, I know that much. I already apologized to her. I said, I'm not dodging your meetings. It's just we have a standing meeting. But yeah, she's a great resource.
All right, thank you.
I think Ryan checked with those people before he took the job and made sure we were okay before he came on. He took the job, so they must have gave a good word for it.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our law enforcement update with Captain Meesmer.
Mayor, council. Let's get to this last one, and apparently I'm getting ambushed in the back left corner here, that nobody bothered to tell me about. I appreciate that. Nope, neither button's working for me. Here we go. So our June twenty twenty-five numbers. We had two thousand eight hundred and forty-three law enforcement-related activities, one thousand five hundred and eighty-three residents checks checking your homes and businesses, seven hundred and eighty-one traffic stops, and a non-emergency response time of seven minutes and two seconds. That's no blue light, no siren, us just generally driving to you. Now let's get into the fourth. That was a very good event, very large. We had around forty-five thousand, give or take, total for the third and the fourth. Great attendance. The third, we were around ten thousand three hundred. The parade, we were around sixty-five hundred, and a very nice crowd of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred on July fourth, which I will not argue with our town manager about any true numbers or discrepancies. I'm giving up after this many years of arguing with him over. Any questions for me? I know there'll be more questions later and more comments, but any questions about the law enforcement update? And I have not forgot about Lakeview. I found out today. So Derek gave me a call, and we'll be working on that tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chief Dunn with our fire department update.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. So the fire department report for the month of June. We start off with our fire marshal activities. They had some site visits, meetings, consultations, precinct medals, ten of those, some special event planning, which mostly was around the Fourth, blasting permit and things of that nature. As far as meetings, again, a lot of meetings is July Fourth events. As far as fire prevention, they did go to the Adventured Church with a field day, and I'm sure they sprayed the kids with water there, as they always enjoy. Station one had a tour, and then they attended two programs at our area churches and daycares. Again, most of what he does is the general inspections of our businesses in town, but you can also see he does some foster care, daycares, plan review upfits, and plan reviews for buildings. Completed sixteen inspections in the month of June. Seven of those are re-inspections. Pretty light month for the Fire Marshal's Office. As usual, we show a violation to the right in the picture. That's what we call a riser room, where a sprinkler system and the water comes into the building. Those are required to have at least three feet of clearance in all directions around those. Violations, again, mostly we see fire extinguishers, but you can see the array of other violations that they find out in our businesses. As far as operational statistics, we responded to two hundred and fifty-four incidents in the month of June. Response times did click up a little bit. I think last month we were like at three minutes forty-seven seconds. We're just under, a little under, four minutes for the month of June. And you can see how that correlates to our twelve-month chart for the response times. The graph shows it did tick up a little bit in the month of June. As far as actual fires that we had in the month of June, we did assist Midland and Charlotte each with structure fires. We had two brush fires in our area, and then we did have a rather large scrapyard fire in the month of June. Station one leads the pack, followed closely by station two and then station three. Again, most of the incidents that we see are MVA-related, fire alarms, NEMS related in that forty-five percent. The heat map, as it correlates to the number of our incident locations in our fire district. And that's it. Simple sweep. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Dunn? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Just a few mayor's comments this evening. We did, as you have seen already, had an amazing turnout for our July third and fourth festivities. I did just want to echo a thank you to all of our staff and first responders for keeping us safe and making that event very enjoyable for our residents and our visitors. Just a reminder, we do have our next Rockin' the Bird concert at Harrisburg Park on Saturday, August ninth. That is with country singer and songwriter Crystal King, so hope to see you there. We did have some exciting news in Harrisburg today. We have two local gentlemen that were drafted into the Major League Baseball. We've got former Hickory Ridge High School graduate Ethan Young, and he was drafted to the St. Louis Cardinals. And then we have Jake Barbie, who is a J.M. Robinson graduate, who was drafted to the Texas Rangers. So we wish both of those gentlemen lots of luck. So of course, we could not let this evening go by without recognizing one of our very dear friends and colleagues, Captain Meesmer. As you heard him speak earlier, he will be retiring at the end of this month, which then makes this his last Harrisburg Town Council meeting. Captain, can you come on up to the front, meet me up here?
It's always a great thing to walk in to your boss's offices in the back room.
Yes, thank you, Sheriff Shaw, for being able to see me as well. I have a long list of things to read. We're going to be kind. We're going to keep this PG wherever we go. We'll try. We do want to take this moment to really honor a truly exceptional leader that we have here in Harrisburg. A couple of these where we post a little picture of him every night, where this all started. It's a long year. He began his law enforcement career back in nineteen ninety-six as an engine officer with the McHenry County Police Department. He completed his basic law enforcement training in nineteen ninety-nine. Feels like yesterday.
Sure.
In two thousand and one, he joined the Harris County Sheriff's Office, and from that moment, he became the cornerstone of public safety and law enforcement. Over the years, he rose through the ranks. He was a field training officer in two thousand three, sergeant in two thousand eight, lieutenant in two thousand eighteen, and in two thousand twenty-two, he made history as the first captain of the Harrisburg Division. Two thousand twenty-two is really when he, I guess, took on his most impactful role, and he really led the efforts to build out, built out the first full division in Harrisburg. What quickly began as a small team grew to over thirty, and we are forever grateful for him building that in his divisional leadership. He also supervised law enforcement operations across Harrisburg, organized security for major town events, acted in the vital liaison between the town and the sheriff's office, oversaw the critical incident here for an disaster response teams, and has been a very respected and influential leader in our community. I have lots I would really like to say, but we can't do that in a public setting. So we do have a proclamation that we would like to present you, and really thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Sheriff Shaw, the chief, if you have a minute, for a picture, please. Being safe at times, not excited about this, but I were able to pull off this surprise.
Yep, I had no clue until I walked in, saw him in the back row. Oh, come on. I'm trying to hide from this. You got my neck, dude. Well, like the mayor said, not only a critical role here, but a critical role within the sheriff's office. And he does an outstanding job. He's moved this so far forward in a very short period of time to accomplish what's been accomplished here in Harrisburg. We're committed to Harrisburg. We've been law enforcement in Harrisburg for twenty-five years. So we've had a great relationship. We're going to continue that. We're in the process now. I won't use the word replacement. We're in the process of assessing and selecting a new captain, because we could never replace Chris, for sure. He's one of a kind. That's all I'm going to say.
Chris, we hope you stay forever snarky.
I was going to say it, but I decided not to. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. That is all for mayor's comments. We'll move into council comments.
So I'll echo again, our phenomenal Parks team. They did a wonderful job. Devin and I were laughing at the beginning of the meeting that on Monday, like, I was still tired, and all I did was participate. So I can't imagine how tired our Parks team is and will probably still is from just the gear up for the Fourth and then trying to recuperate thereafter. That said, I do think that it is important for us to make sure that we answer the question that has been asked twice tonight, if there's any opportunity for our Parks, for our council, to partner with Juneteenth going forward. This was a group of students that, due to school choice, don't go to Hickory Ridge High School, but are residents of Harrisburg, and they partnered with their schools, with their black student unions, to bring this Juneteenth event to Harrisburg. I'm proud of them and the work that they did to make that happen. And they worked, they built those relationships with churches across Cabarrus County, civic groups across Cabarrus County, to include Oak Grove Baptist Church and Belfont and other, you know, nonpartisan organizations. And in part, they look at other cities and what they're doing. Kannapolis has a partnership that has been formal for two years. The city of Concord has been more than five years. And when they use their facilities, their parks, whatever that looks like, there, especially if there's a school group that's doing it or a nonprofit group that's doing it, the facilities are at a reduced rate or free available to them. So you're asking students to come up with a substantial amount of money. And we're grateful for BPC and Oak Grove and Belfont and all the other folks that helped offset that cost. So I would ask that we really do decide where memories are made and what that looks like in Harrisburg, and who we're celebrating and what we're celebrating here. We say that in almost every slide, almost every presentation that we do as a town. So I would just encourage us to make sure that it is representative of all of Harrisburg.
I sum out to all the department directors, Rob, all your staff, my thank you directly and also the same, you know, we always give Parks credit for that wonderful event, but I would be a mess to say, you know, one morning I was headed to work at seven AM and there in front of Killian's Plaza, there's one of our public works guys edging the sidewalk. Ran into that same guy Saturday night, and I said, why are we all edging? He says, we take care of the sidewalks that don't get taken care of that one week before. You know, I don't know how much we don't recognize that gets done, right? You know, we bring in the sheriffs, we bring in the fire department. You know, those guys we see all the time. We see Parks and Rec because we know this is their event, but do we always see public works? Do we always see finance for the contracts they sign? You know, finance is probably back in the back. People are like, oh, they didn't. Yeah, they did. They were part of it just as much as the Park and Rec guys. So I'm not stealing anybody's thunder, but I absolutely want to make sure that we fully recognize and understand that it's those smaller pieces that also come together that make this an event that's exciting.
And our staff does appreciate that, and you'd heard it earlier, but it really, I mean, this is a team effort from top to bottom. You'd mentioned, you know, finance with contracts. Brian and Maggie are in a little rat hole in the back of the concession stand for two days, just counting money, right? Because nobody's allowed to, nobody's allowed to handle that except for our finance staff and the folks that have the legal authority to do that and to make banking deposits and that stuff. So, you know, we have directors and assistant directors and back storage closets taking payments and reconciling books and making bank deposits. And as you said, you know, public works guys, think about how much garbage is generated at that event. It's not, it's not on the ground. You know, both nights I was there till about one AM, and our folks were still loading up garbage cans at one AM and dumping those and getting the place cleaned up for either the next day or just for the weekend, because after the Fourth is over, people want to go out there the Fifth and Sixth and jog and play soccer and things like that. So it really is a team effort. We've got hundreds of people at that event. But if it goes wrong, Jim gets the blame. So I'll let him take the praise, too, because the buck does stop somewhere. But yeah, a lot of people involved with that, and it really is an incredible amount of work from the whole team.
Yeah, and the last thing I want to say is Captain Meesmer, thank you for your professionalism, your, you know, never-ending responses to my crazy texts sometimes to figure out what the heck's going on here or there, or where we need you, or if you're on vacation, you know, you still respond. And it's been a great relationship. I've served on this council for two and a half terms. I don't know that we've had any one officer have a relationship that you've had with all of this council, from a professional and from a personal. You do a lot for this town, and there'll be never enough words to say thank you, but thank you.
And he has served two and a half terms because he warned me at the parade, you're going to run out of swag by the time you get to Zmax, rookie. I was out. Excellent job. But it also reminds me, you know, with Chris's retirement, I look at world events and I see, you know, floods in Texas and, you know, tornadoes, and the Grand Canyon's on fire, and they're out of water in Meben. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support Chief Dunn and Chris and your replacement. What is it? We don't recruit, we reload. That's what we're going to do. We're going to reload. But to make sure we provide a safe and happy environment here. And it, and if it is safe and happy, it's not an accident. It's because of the hard work. So thank you.
Any other council comments?
Mayor, I have one really quick.
Yes.
I'm glad Sheriff Shaw's here tonight because I really, during the fourth, well, actually it was the third, during the, during the concert and everything that was taking place. My hero is standing in the back of the, of the chambers this evening. Sorry, Captain Meesmer, it's not you. I watched him for about 45 minutes throwing ball with several of our kids that were down by the stage. And I told him, I walked down and told him behind the stage, I said, you are my hero. And he said, man, I thought I was only going to be out there like five or 10 minutes. But he stood out there and he had not just two kids playing, but you ended up getting a congregation of kids around you. And I watched you, you threw with him. Sorry if I get you in trouble. I'm trying to do that. But I, I mean, I think, you know, when we talk about community policing and what that looks like and, and what that, what people see from our sheriff's department, it's so much more than just law enforcement. And thank you for being part of that, being part of the community. It was, I was very impressed and you got a pretty good arm on you. Great, great, great time. Thank you. Thank you.
And Michael did get a photo of that.
He did.
I was glad to see that. So thank you.
All right, thank you. So we will move in, we do not have any public hearings this evening and we do not have any old business. But we do have three items of new business. And first up is the consideration of resolution opposing Senate Bill 205. And Rob's going to hit a couple of highlight notes on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Everybody has a, a copy of the resolution in front of them. This is a resolution of the Harrisburg Town Council in opposition. You don't have a copy? Okay, it was in the agenda packet, but we will get you seven copies. I'm going to read from mine. So you're going to grab somebody else's and, yeah, you could grab a couple of copies. But I got, I got, I got five to seven minutes here. I can stretch it out to nine if you need me to. We'll get everybody a copy of this. But this is very similar to what we did with House Bill 765. You're going to, you're going to think, what is the difference here? And the answer is going to be not a lot because this is a bait and switch by the legislature, again, trying to get around the ire of residents of North Carolina and pull a fast one and limit the residents' ability to have self-governance in their towns. So what you have is a, an opposition resolution. And it starts out just describing what happened where there was a simple swimming pool inspection bill. This was a bill that, that basically said, you don't have to get commercial inspections on your home swimming pool. Seems innocuous enough. And in committee, there was a substitution bill submitted that basically changed it into an omnibus, wide-ranging land use prohibition bill, eliminating almost every tool that municipalities have to limit development in their communities. And I'm going to highlight a few of these. But again, these are all the same that were in House Bill 765. And that's on purpose because this was just a non-transparent repackaging of House Bill 765 into a pool inspection bill, Senate Bill 205, thinking, well, we wouldn't pay any attention. And 765 was dead on arrival after we passed our resolution, which sparked a statewide outrage from residents realizing you wouldn't have any ability to do simple things like conditional rezoning. If somebody wants to come into your town and it doesn't quite fit, but they want to negotiate with the resident. So it's like, hey, you know, we'll do some traffic improvements so that's not so bad. Or, hey, we'll, we'll, we'll put bigger buffers in between your neighborhood and ours because we understand the impact. This bill would make that illegal. That would prohibit the community from negotiating or even accepting voluntary conditions on, on any rezoning. It would render development standards basically null and void. Development would be allowed to occur regardless of damage to the environment, the town, the citizens, or the adjacent properties. And there's not much the community could do or the council do to stop it. It makes most, most things by right. Enables developers to extend their vested rights for unused plans from two years. So right now, if you do a plan and you don't do anything for two years, you have to come back. That would extend it out to five years. So now you can sit on a plan for five years. Towns and communities can change their rules and that doesn't matter. You don't have to abide by, by those rules. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this is one page. So take, take one page and.
Is it different than what was in our packet?
It's the exact same thing that's in your packet, but I'll give you, I'll give you a hard copy. And I'm, I'm going to read a few of these, these bullet points here just to hit the highlights. Burdens the local government with taxpayers and taxpayers with the cost of building additional road infrastructure currently required by, by developers. This basically takes road infrastructure improvements that we require that are necessary and says, nope, can't do that anymore. And not only can, can you not require it, even your basic standard that you do require, they don't actually have to build it. They can put a bond up with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And the North Carolina Department of Transportation can give a developer the authority to build houses with no roads in your town and just bond them. I'm not even sure how that works. I don't know how you drive to your house in that, in that scenario. But certainly creates one heck of a problem for, for us locally. Prohibits the elected officials from making development determinations, including subdivisions. Creates this additional paperwork burden on local governments. So we'd have to raise our taxes in order to file tons of these financial paperwork to show the cost of, or the projected cost. I'm not even sure it's possible. But what they want us to do is to say every law that we pass, every regulation that we pass, we have to show how much that would add cost to each and every single family home that's built. The Fed can't do that and they're filled with economists. How we would do that with our current staff is impossible. So what we'd have to do is hire staff and then we would have to pass that tax burden on to our residents. Prohibits any development regulation or UDO from including a waiting period after reapplication. So if we deny something, they can just bring it back next week, same thing, clog up our agenda. Right now, there's a one-year waiting period. Expands civil action based on development regulations or development approval or denials, basically creating an additional taxpayer cost as we'd have to defend ourselves in court from every decision we make that a developer doesn't like. Many, many more of these and this resolution will be public. But the long and the short of it is the development community in North Carolina already has a massive upper hand versus land use rules compared to any other state in America. We're, we're near the bottom of our ability to, to regulate. And this bill, as in House Bill 765, is checkmate for local communities. What they're looking to do is put the death knell into land use planning in North Carolina. We don't have much left to give, community-wise. There is no negotiation to be made with developers. Developers, as we can see in Cabarrus County, already have the upper hand. They can already develop pretty much carte blanche. We have very limited ways to limit impacts to existing residents. And the Real Estate and Developer Coalition has made it their mission to basically eliminate land use planning in its entirety and eliminate the residents' ability to have any influence on what your town looks like and how you would like to grow. So we drafted this resolution after discussion with several council members and the mayor to at least put on record our formal opposition. We have sent out our informal opposition and this bill has since been kind of laid in wait. But I believe at any point, as soon as our guard is down, there will be a, you know, simple budget resolution or a simple amendment that nobody's looking at and they will try to slide it in. And we will have to fight in order to keep just our, our basic ability for self-governance locally. So are there any questions on the resolution? And if not, I would recommend we pass that and send that along to our state representatives.
Rob, I did want to add too, I think one of the disheartening pieces on this is they're pitching this as a cure-all to affordable housing. And this does not address affordable housing in our community or really any other community nationwide. So that seems to be the bait to get people, oh, yes, we, we have an affordable housing crisis in America. This is a great way to fix it and it's just quite simply not. It's just that heading, I think, to, to grab attention.
It's a great point, Mayor. And, and we've had good feedback and conversations with representatives in Raleigh about just that. A lot of people have been willing to sign on because, like, like anything else, they just name it the opposite of what it is. And, and so, you know, this is all packaged as, hey, we have a housing crisis. Never let a good crisis go to waste. How can we make more money off of this? And so developers and realtors get together and say, look, we can eliminate even more government regulation and we'll just tell them this will make housing costs go down. If, if developers were able to lower the cost of housing, it would be dirt cheap by now. That is not their, that is not their goal. Even if they wanted to, most of these companies are publicly held. They have a fiduciary responsibility to their shareholders. They are not allowed to cut prices of housing out of the goodness of their heart. They have to maximize shareholder value. And nothing in these bills will lower housing costs and it will not make anything more affordable. To quite the contrary, I think we're able to show many of these provisions would actually decrease access to housing and increase the cost of housing in our region.
You know, when I saw this come up, thank God for AI. I'm bad now about sticking stuff in AI. And I, you know, with this, when I started off, I'm like, how much of this bill is related to swimming pools? 10% is swimming pool related. And that's only in, in section one, of course. If you go down to, you know, my next thing was how much of this bill restricts local municipalities and their authority? You know, they come back and says, the vast majority focus on restricting local government authority, particularly regarding development regulations, zoning land use and administrative procedures. And then, you know, at the bottom, as I continue down this little rabbit hole, it says 85 to 90% of the bill is focused on limiting or standardizing local government powers.
And it's not once that fits all?
No, no. And, you know, it gave me a breakdown of what you would be before your municipality's powers versus what it would be afterwards. They even go to your driveway parking structures. But, you know, the bottom line summary that it shoots back, and this was the one that really rang the bell, substantially restricts local control and shifts power towards developers, property owners by mandating faster objective approvals, reducing discretion in zoning permitting and design review, blocking local public health oversight of pools, making it harder to pause or limit growth. And the last one right there, pause or limit growth. Every, you know, almost every day I see something, whether it be on local conversations or whether it be on social media, you name it, growth, growth, growth. I got too much growth. And, you know, this is, as you said, the complete opposite of what people are wanting right now. They want things to slow down, get, you know, get back on the train and let's go with the slope. So absolutely all support it.
With that then, is there a motion to adopt resolution, Senate Bill 205, opposition as presented?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion is carried. Thank you, Rob, for putting that together for us. Item B under new business, this consideration of the contract with signs for the Harrisburg Park and Harrisburg YMCA entrance monument sign. I guess this means it's real since we're finally seeing sign designs. So thank you, Jim, for presenting that with us tonight.
You're welcome. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to be up here to introduce to you a new monument sign for an entrance to Harrisburg Park and the Harrisburg YMCA. I'm going to be doing this presentation with my zoning director. Zach will be up here in a couple of minutes to talk about some of the processes. But in the meanwhile, meantime, I want to bring to your attention that we're all very excited about this, not only because of the YMCA opening and being inside the park, but Snyder City is the first monument sign, entry site to be built in a long, long time. We're excited about doing that and putting it right in along with our main core words right there at Highway 49. And so it's my pleasure to support and.
Give you some background. So we're anticipating that the YMCA, which is located inside the park, will open its doors in late summer or early fall. And it will be a great opportunity for our residents to take advantage of the wellness benefits to both the park and the YMCA offered daily. Part of the agreement between the town and YMCA is the construction of a new entrance monument sign at the corner of Highway 49 and Zmax Boulevard, directing visitors to both Harrisburg Park and the new Harrisburg YMCA. The cost of this project will be $66,656 and it will be split at 50% by both the town and the YMCA. And with that, I'll introduce Zach to come on up and talk about the design process.
Good evening, everyone. This is a, a long process. We started this two years ago on the layout design of this property. And it really is great to see the building coming out of the ground. And I was here the other day on inspection and very excited to see the pool and everything getting ready to roll. So this was really close cooperation between the town and the YMCA, work really closely together. And just about every department, I, I could have put everybody up on that screen, were involved in this in one way or another. The goal, as Jim said, was to create a, a monument that would be a gateway to Harrisburg Park and Harrisburg YMCA. The, the sign is, is going to be very attractive, brick, stone facade. It'll have the town and YMCA logos and it will be halo lit. And we're all excited to see the halo lit, right, Rob? We're very excited about that. The monument sign is consistent with all our regulations. So we make sure we follow our own rules, Mike, just, just to put, for the record. And this, also want to point out that Cookout has provided the easement for this sign. So again, another one of our corporate new favorite places to go is helping out with this sign. So you can see the location here. Again, this is Cookout, just open. The sign will be just before Zmax. As you come in, this will be heading toward town. This is heading out of town. And a little closer view, the dimensions of this, 16 feet by about six feet. You can see the landscaping in front. Thank you, Casey. She not only is a great communications director, she's also a landscape illustrator. So we're really glad that we got Casey. And you can see the, the logos that'll match on both sides. It'll be very nice. And then here is the Rob Glow effect. Rob wanted to, to make sure that this was a presence at night as well as during the day. And so this is a image, and we probably have to turn all the lights off to get the full effect, of what the sign will look like at night when it is backlit. And it will be very, very attractive. And we are looking forward to that and to the park opening. So I'm going to turn it back to Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Zach. So as far as the recommendation, obviously staff recommends the construction of the Harrisburg Park and Harrisburg YMCA entrance monument sign at the corner of Highway 49 and Zmax Boulevard, as well as a sharing of costs at 50% each for the town of Harrisburg and Harrisburg YMCA. With that, before we get to any motion, will you entertain any questions or comments any of you may have?
It looks wonderful. Just one question, who owns this sign going forward? If lights burn out, edges need trimming?
Town, town maintenance staff will take care of it.
Maintenance, okay. Bricks fall apart, needs pressure washing, you guys will.
Okay.
Can you go back to the shop drawing one that you had up?
Nope, that one right there.
So, and I just assumed the rendering was a rendering, but. So, and I just assumed the rendering was a rendering, but the rendering looked like the Y logo was a big kind of square that was halo lit. I assume you're actually going to have the, and then the Y logo, and that's what's going to be halo lit, not a square that's photoshopped in there. Okay. Just checking.
Yep.
Look, just checking.
Details.
Hey, you know me.
I heard that somewhere before, Zach. Have you heard that question?
That's it, right there. You see right there?
There you go. There's a magnetic lasso tool in Photoshop that'll let you...
I've tried to figure it out for 10 minutes. I should call you.
Give me a call.
My question is more related to, and I can't remember how many months ago, we talked about our signage across the town, one, making it uniform and updating it. So is this setting the standard for what our new signage will look like?
So I would say yes. I think this is, and Zach gave me, and he's in rare form, he gave a lot of ribbing tonight, but he gave me the ribbing about the halo effect, which, which was something that, you know, I had pushed hard on, which is taking elements of how it's lit in Farmington and integrating it with some of our standard, traditional color patterns and brick with kind of our tabletops and stone elements. So instead of having kind of this flooded-out uplighting, taking that away and doing this internal acrylic backlit look to it. So this would be more of our standard. And this is the first monument sign that we've done in some time. And we have some others on the plate, but a signature, signature monument sign for our signature park, done in that kind of combination effort, drawing the elements we really liked out of Farmington, but keeping our traditional Harrisburg colors and look.
Okay, thank you.
I'll also add that we're going to time this out. We want to time it so that it's not done too soon, but not, you know, ready to go when they open. So we're going to start working with the sign vendor to try to find out what some lead times are and that kind of stuff, so we can get, I expect to see that start rolling fairly soon, based on, we'll be kept apprised of the YMCA's schedule as they go, as they run into different pickups or whatever. So we don't want it up too soon, but we also want to make sure it's up when they open.
It's only visible in one direction, right? Is it visible in both directions, or just one direction?
It's a two-sided.
Because...
Yeah. I thought it was two-sided.
Never asked that question?
It should be two-sided. It's got to be.
I guess I've assumed the entire time, but I don't want to say yes, although I've never asked the question.
And it doesn't say it in the...
Jim, it is two-sided?
I'm pretty sure a design process here is, I'm pretty sure...
If it's not, it will be.
It's got to be two-sided.
Let me answer that.
We will get, we will get that answer for sure, but yes, if not, it's going to have to be, so.
All right.
Yeah, they would have, yeah, I guess I never asked it specifically, I just assumed. But yes, we will check and make sure that it's two-sided.
Anything else?
All right. With that, is there a motion to approve the contract with signs, et cetera, as stated?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second, as long as it's two-sided.
Yeah.
We just approved one side.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. And our last and final new business this evening is consideration of construction services contract for the Cambridge Drive Extension and Davis Creek Greenway, and we have Devin Houston with us this evening. Hi, Devin.
Mayor, Members Council. Good evening. As Mayor said, this is the consideration for the construction services contract for Cambridge Drive Extension. Little bit of background here, we've got, continuing the town's goal and of interconnectivity between the town center and the adjacent areas. We recently completed the Financial Way Extension right behind the McDonald's, and this will be bookending the other side to reach over to Davis Creek neighborhood and the few businesses that are over there. So that's just continuing on along those routes. This project will include a large culvert that's going to go over the creek there. There's actually a lot more water there than may seem, but, so you've got the road connection, and then there's approximately 950 feet of greenway along the Davis Creek behind that neighborhood there that was built not too long ago. This design is done by R.K.N.K. This is a schematic of it. I'll give you, you can look at that. This gives more of a detailed look. You can see the location connecting to Carl Palmer, and then over to Cambridge Drive, which was built with that new neighborhood, a little bit, very rough schedule, but gives you a better idea where it is with this image. So the orange is going to be the roadway portion, and the green will be the greenway This, we had put this out back in February for the initial bid for the construction project, and we only received one bid, so we couldn't open. Proceeded with rebidding it, and the bids came in very high. We were at roughly 1.8-plus million for that first bid, so we revisited that, went back to the drawing board a little bit, and tried to hopefully lower the prices. With this last one, performance manager was the parent low bidder, and we got a total bid of 1.572 million. And we further took that, worked with Rob here, and we went through that and kind of reduced that just a little bit more, and gives us what we are asking to be awarded here for $1,401,350. We've given the construction deadline for the contract of June 30th, 2026, so roughly a year from the time we start. This one's a little bit convoluted in the fiscal impact, so I may have Brian chime in if he can explain it, if we have any questions about that. But the total contract is $1,401,350. It was formally bid through the, through that formal process, and the town attorneys reviewed and approved the attached contract. This is one of several transportation bond projects. This is actually rounding out, this will be the last one. That total amount was $4 million, and throughout the projects that have been previously done, we are short $625,000 of those bond funds to cover this. So also included in this motion is the budget and amendments to move over that $625,000 to cover the rest of this cost here. And also included is the reimbursement resolution, which provides authority to include the costs and the debt of the bond issues at a later date. So our staff recommendation is to authorize the town manager to finalize negotiation and execution of the attached construction services contract to performance managed, and the amount not to exceed $1,401,350 for the construction of the Cambridge Drive Extension and Davis Creek Greenway, and approve the related budget and project ordinance amendments and reimbursement resolution. And with that, I'll take any questions or comments?
Can we look at that map again where you drew?
Absolutely.
The little line. These two streets that are connecting, they're going to have two different names. Do we have ability to just extend the same name on the, along the street, or do we...
We can, there is a method by which you can change the name of a street. It's not independent, but there is a process by which we pass a resolution, go to the county. We have done that when we did Forest Street to Gammelclaw.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering, Cambridge Street, of course, has a lot more houses and all that, so you could probably extend that name to the whole street.
That would definitely be the easier way because of addressing.
Yeah.
So if you got to change, you know, 50 people's addresses versus none, then...
And they'd probably, yeah, I agree.
Is there any developer money in this? I forget so far behind.
In a roundabout way, because we have $300,000 of greenway money that tends to be fee-in-lue-of in projects like this. So that project's very old, and they did some improvements, like the greenway there is platted and graded and put down as like a gravel, but this finishes that out. They did pay fee-in-lue-of in that project, and some Harrisburg Village paid some fee-in-lue-of. So there is developer money, but it's not like direct. It goes into the pot and then comes back out.
Can you remind me what the, what the impetus for this project was? Like what started this?
So there were, there were, there were several on this originally when, and what is the name of that, that development there, the newer one?
Davis Creek.
Davis Creek, yes. So when Davis Creek originally went in, part of this was for them to connect in. They had to have that, that connection, they had to bring it out to the light through various events of not physically being able to construct it, not being able to be developer-driven. It was negotiated at that time to just leave that gap and leave that for a transportation bond project at a later date, when and if that, that project went. And they did some fee-in-lue-of, but it was much smaller than, than the cost of something like this. But this got us our second signalized exit from town center out to 49, because the entrance that Davis Creek put in there, they signaledized that. So when you think of how traffic backs up at Main Street and 49, basically now, well past Aldi, this is a secondary access in and out of 49. And also, if we were able to zoom out on this picture, which I know we can't, connects the neighborhoods that are in our downtown. So we talk about connecting to the east and west and providing access north and south across 49. This provides that eastern access for the entire neighborhood that existed prior to Davis Creek going in, now goes through Davis Creek, and they're able to come into town center without going out onto 49 and trying to get in Main Street.
It was platted this way, though, Rob?
Yes.
Okay. And it makes a lot of sense, because there's a traffic light now, so you can, if you're coming from the north, can take a right, and then you can go to visit businesses in town center without having to go through 49.
Yeah, when town center was created, that stub right away was put in there, as the mayor had mentioned. So it's always been envisioned that this would attach when something developed to the east. But just due to the creek crossings and some of the overall plans that we had in town center, it was left as a stub there, and the town would connect as a municipal project later.
So I guess I'm just, I think I'm not opposed to it. I know we, we have connectivity, but, you know, we're doing the town center overlay, like, might be some commentary on that connectivity. And you said you bid it three times, twice?
This was the third one, the first one we just didn't get enough responses. The second one was, was higher than we were comfortable with.
Yeah, so you bid it again.
Yeah, and we were able to bring down the cost that way, and then through some value engineering and line-up and stuff, so.
I mean, I, this is one of those projects where it's like, okay, but, you know, government just tends to be on an opposing financial cycle from the general building community. And we're seeing bids come high. Is this one of those, like, pump the brakes, wait till construction prices come down, and then knock it out for half the cost? Because we're adding, what'd you say, 600-something thousand from capital reserves on this project? I just feel like, is this, is this so critical to get done now, or can we get it done cheaper later? That's just kind of where I'm standing. It's like, okay, you know, it's 50 homes, it's some connectivity, it gets some traffic on, off 49, maybe not that much? Like, is it really worth, is the, is the lemon worth the squeeze? And I'm just not convinced it is at this point, with construction prices the way they are.
We had that conversation, and if you notice how it's, how it's broken down. So my short answer is, I don't think so.
Yeah.
But the longer answer to that is, is why we don't think so. This originally bid in at about 1.9 million.
Yeah.
We went, we went back, and we're like, okay, that's, that's the, you know, juice is more to squeeze, right? There's better projects to do for that. So what's driving that? And we're up to do some value engineering on that and rebid it and get that down to right around the, you know, 1.5, 1.6 amount. When looking back at it, it's like, okay, about 300,000 of this total project cost of the engineering and construction, everything, is really related to the add-on of this greenway. Could we eliminate that greenway and do that later, and get this down closer to that original cost? So instead of being over 600, we're only over 300, and, and that's more of that striking distance that we want to get down to. So we went from 1.9 down to, you know, about 1.6, and now down to 1.4. And 300,000 of that is really a separate project of greenway that we're influxing to 300. So, you know, originally, this was going to be about a $900,000 project, and now it's 1.1 million. It's taken years to get to here, so being, you know, 20% over is kind of expected at 7% a year. It takes a couple of years, we're, you know, and we have contingency in there. So we, when Devin and I looked at this, and we've had lots of conversation of this from an engineering standpoint, the driving cost on this is the fact that we have to build that culvert crossing, and it's not a culvert, it's going to be an actual formed construction of a real, you know, mini-bridge there. That's just manual work, and I don't see the cost of that material going down significantly. If there's a major recession, yeah, you might get somebody really hungry doing it, but I would imagine by then it's going to be plus or minus that 10 to 15%, not, not a 50% reduction, is, is what we kind of came to. And, you know, Devin, if I'm mistaken on that, you know, add to it, but I mean, that was kind of our, I don't think it's getting cheaper in the next 10 years.
No, and I, and I've spoken with the contractors, and they're like, not anytime sooner is it going to get less expensive than it is right now.
Well, of course, he's...
Right.
But I mean, there's nothing forcing us to do this project at all. Because I'd build the greenway and leave the road for another, personally, I mean, I, I don't know. You guys can decide what you want to do. I'm just a no vote at this point, because it's like, this just seems like...
So we do have to spend down the transportation bonds, which is one thing, pushing it, because it is a transportation bond project that was identified during that package, during that time. So we would have to shift that money somewhere else, but...
Is, is that what was driving the change? Because I swore, I remembered when this got approved, it was a pad, bike path, walk path. It wasn't to be any cars. And then it changed.
That was part of what Davis Creek was going to do as part of their negotiation when this was like a rezoning. Now, again, I was in a different role at that time, and that just went away, and I'm not sure what those negotiations were, when that condition went away, because that was our understanding too, was, okay, well, if you're not going to build the connection, or you can't, or, you know, it's just going to not happen, and the powers that be want this to happen, then can you at least build the pedestrian so we can take golf carts and bicycles and stuff? But somehow, that never ended up being a condition either.
Oddly enough, I did have two people ask me about this in the last two weeks.
Residents?
Yeah.
Don't want it?
That want it.
They want the connection.
Yeah, I sent it, I sent it to Devin last month, one of the folks, she actually works in the building where I do, and was like, hey, what's going on with that? And I'm like, let me check, because it's been a while. And ironically, it's back up, but the other Sheila was asking about it.
And you said you, when did the bonds, would they have to be spent?
There is a sunset on transportation bonds, and I don't know what, what our date is on...
November 27.
27.
Yeah, fully expended and paid out by November of 27.
Not encumbered, expended? Expended. And then, let's just say something came out of town center overlay, I feel like we could get creative enough to move it to that. And then I also saw something about, what was the way it was worded, further debt to be issued later? What was that about? The last bullet point?
I'm going to ask Brian to come up, because that's all minutia with the...
Can you go back to, that was my question?
With the resolution on how, because they issue this in packages.
I love telling people about reimbursement resolution.
Yeah, no, I want to hear about it, all about it.
It is, it is a very simple resolution that just says that we will expend this money or commit to this contract now, and you have committed to the potential to finance that project at a future date. So whenever we go to close the loan, they want to see that we have all contracts in hand, and that you have passed a reimbursement resolution for any money that has been spent on construction cost before we've issued that loan, so that we can go back and capture all those.
I see, okay. So it's not a, it's not a... I see, okay. So it's not a, it's not a bond item?
No.
It's a loan item?
Yep.
Just guarantee for the bank, basically? Okay, because I read it as, we're going to do bonds later, and this is going in, and I was like.
That is essentially what it's saying, though.
Is it?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Now, we don't have to finance the project. If we can pay the cash, and then if we get into next year and we decide interest rates are horrible, and we don't want to even do the end of the bonds, the second round of bonds, we don't have to. But if we don't have this in place, we can't.
So basically, no matter what the project is, if it's financed by the bond, that language will be in there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My take on it is that municipal debt is really borrowed at a very low rate compared to like market rates. And I think with inflation, I really don't see prices coming down. I feel like the next crisis is going to be, somehow it's going to involve some devaluation of the dollar. But that's just my take. So I think if we can borrow this at a lower rate and improve connectivity in town center, I think this will be very useful, whatever they create, you know, other projects around it. I think having this road will be very useful.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Go back one thing. So with that, is there a motion to authorize the town manager to finalize the negotiations and executions as stated below?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
All right, the motion is carried. Thank you so much. And that concludes our new business, and we will move into action items. Rob, I had three written down. First one was the consideration of Harrisburg Juneteenth participation. I'd imagine that needs to be incorporated into budget discussions.
Yes, so that'll be twofold. It'll be, one, you know, the policy part we would discuss in our budget process. We would also discuss any sponsorships, partnerships, participations inside of our budget as well. But first, that would go through the organization to parks. And Jim, my understanding was that was done this year, but there was, there was no request for partnership this year, right?
Correct.
And so we want to make sure that that partnership gets over to parks prior to the end of this year. Any proposals that way when we get it to you all in January that we have?
Rob, there were quite a few things ahead of that, I don't think they've been able to solve.
Okay. Perfect, okay. All right, so that would be the kind of a split action item if it, so to speak.
And then I had the sign. Can we just confirm that it's two-sided?
It's two-sided.
It's two-sided. Oh, thank you, Lee. Okay, so we can top that off. And then I did have just consideration of an address to continue Cambridge. I had that on there. Did I miss anything else?
I was just going to have two resident meetings with the two folks that I had promised. One on the alternative analysis and the other on what would constitute a political vendor at a town project.
Perfect. And we do not have a need for closed session this evening, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I forgot one thing, sorry, in our council comments. And only because it's a strong partner or community member, Frozen Cups has lost their lease. It will be closing on seven thirty-one, so here's our chance to show our love to Frozen Cups before they leave. I don't know what the future holds for those guys, and they've been working very hard and opening another location. But, sorry, I forgot to include that in my.
We'll see what Ryan can do.
Yeah, I was going to say, make sure you talk to Ryan.
No pressure, Ryan.
As far as I knew, they were still keeping their truck. It was the site location they were losing.
Thank you for bringing that to everybody's attention. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you so much.